All right, good evening. Welcome to the November 26th meeting of the Nixa City Council. Call the meeting to order.
Kelly Morris, here. Matt Ogden. Sean Lucas. Aaron Peterson.
Here.
Darlene Graham.
Here.
Zern Vess.
Here.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, has everyone had a chance to review the consent agenda? And would anyone like anything removed? Not, I will accept the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
First by Ms. Graham, second by Mr. Vess. Roll call, please.
Zern Vess?
Yes.
Aaron Peterson?
Yes.
Darlene Graham?
Yes.
Kelly Morris?
Yes.
All right. Not sure if you all wonder or know why you're even here tonight. So, I have a couple of things. And hopefully I get all of this correct. There's, you guys have done a lot. I will, I will say that. And you've accomplished a lot, and it's pretty impressive. So I'm honored to recognize an exceptional group of students who represent dedication, talent, and the future of agriculture here in Nixa. Our Nixa FFA chapter. Let me first introduce the officers and attendants who are leaders, not only in their chapter, but in their community and the entire region. Addison Spencer is the area and chapter vice president. And I'm gonna, if I mess up a name, I apologize. Ivory Shunover, did I get it? Oh, yes. Is first vice president. Aiden Choat is second vice president. Haley Baker, chapter secretary. Callie Anderson and Ariana Tate are chapter reporters. Hope Roberts is chaplain. And Alex Taprich is historian. In addition to these dedicated officers, we're also joined by members who have achieved important milestones. I'd like to recognize Jaden Elliott, who has earned a chapter degree in green hands. Cannon Faust, Kayden Brewer, Claire Coriel, Ryland Reichoff, and Charlie, where's Charlie? Oh, thank the Lord, because that name is rough for me. And for those who don't know, a green hand is a first-year member who has begun their agricultural education journey and has shown dedication to FFA. This level represents the introductory phase of FFA membership, where students are learning about the basics of ag leadership and FFA principles. To earn the green hand degree, students must meet specific requirements, including learning the FFA creed, motto, and salute, understanding FFA history and mission, and demonstrating knowledge in the FFA emblem and colors. It's often the first step in a series of degrees that FFA members can achieve as they advance and gain experience, including the chapter, state, and American degrees. So just the basic takes a lot of work. The green hand degree is a meaningful milestone as it marks students' commitment to growth in agriculture, leadership, and community involvement. The Nixa FFA chapter has had an impressive year of accomplishments. Just recently, the chapter was recognized with the Third Star National Chapter Award on the national level. This prestigious recognition places Nixa FFA in the top 4% of all chapters nationwide and represents the highest level a chapter can achieve. What's remarkable is that Nixa FFA has achieved this honor in just their fourth year since their rechartering. Among their many achievements, Ivory Shunover, Ivory, sorry, Shunover distinguished herself by performing at the National FFA Convention as part of the National FFA Talent, an honor shared by only 47 acts across the country. She performed throughout downtown Indianapolis, bringing her musical talent with guitar and vocals to both the national and state FFA conventions. Two other outstanding members, Callie Anderson and Aiden Choat, presented at the student showcase during the National FFA Convention. They gave a presentation on their Living to Serve Community Service Project at Bradford Court, which embodies FFA's commitment to serving others. I would also like to recognize several members who have excelled in fall speeches, a challenging event requiring members to prepare and deliver a speech, followed by a round of questions. Addison Spencer placed first in pet breeders. Ariana Tate took first in sheep producers. And Sadie Burdette took second in quarter horse. Each of these members advanced to districts along with Haley Baker, who placed second in young farmers, young farm wives, and Aiden Choat, who placed third in Missouri Farm Bureau. Additional notable performances include Callie Anderson in Teach Ag and Ivory Shunover in Forest Products, who both qualified as alternates to districts. You guys really do a lot. This is insane. In the spirit of service, Nixa FFA received a Living to Serve Fall Grant from the National FFA, which supports their community service work at Bradford Court. Additionally, they're in the process of establishing an FFA Booster Club to further support their initiatives. As for individual achievements, Addison Spencer serves as the area FFA president, representing 23 schools. Ariana Tate attended the High Max Academy for freshmen, while Addison was selected as one of only 30 seniors to participate in the Hype Academy, a tremendous honor. Aiden Choat, Haley Baker, and Ivory Shunover each received their state FFA Leadership Medal and were excited that Addison, along with Taylor Miller and Macy Robinson, will receive their state FFA degree this coming April. Several of the members have also excelled in proficiency awards, with Hope Roberts recognized in goat production, Callie Anderson in agriculture education, and Haley Baker in agricultural services, each winning in their respective categories. Additionally, Aiden Choat, Sadie Burdette, Ariana Tate, and Callie Anderson represented Nixa in the food science team at the state level. Finally, 32 of their green hand members participated in the Area Green Hand Conference, where they won Most Spirited Chapter Award, a true testament to their enthusiasm and dedication. To every member of the FFA here tonight, and to all the ones that couldn't make it, I want you to know how incredibly proud we are of each of you. Your hard work, your commitment to excellence, and your service to our community do not go unnoticed. You are leaders, you are role models, and you are shaping a bright future for our community and our world. So congratulations on all you've achieved, and thank you for representing Nixa so well. And we really can't wait to see what you accomplish next. And hopefully, I don't have to be the one to read it all off, because that is a lot. But with that being said, have something else. And we get to do a cool picture here in a minute, too, so that'll be fun. In recognition of your dedication to excellence, community service, and leadership in agricultural education, the City of Nixa proudly honors the members and officers of the Nixa FFA chapter for your outstanding accomplishments, including achieving three-star national chapter recognition, representing our community with distinction at the National FFA Convention, and demonstrating exemplary service through projects such as the Living to Serve Initiative at Bradford Court. Your commitment to growth and the pursuit of knowledge exemplifies the highest values of leadership and service, inspiring our community and setting a remarkable example for all. On behalf of the City of Nixa, I commend you for your achievements, and thank you for your contributions to our community. Okay. And thank you all very much for being here. It's really great to have you. All right, next up, we got a service awards, Jimmy, so we'll just move on. No, this is a pretty big, pretty big award. 25 years. I think doing any one thing for 25 years is, is a huge commitment. And we are blessed to have you. It's, I've, I've learned a lot. He's, he made the transition for me, going from, well, from everything, from planning and zoning to council, to council, to mayor, very easy. He's always accessible and really helps out. He, I mean, is always willing to meet with community members, any of them that have issues. I mean, he's really good at finding resolutions to problems. The community doesn't realize how lucky they are to have a city administrator like you. So we're all, all pretty blessed for that. Is there anyone that was wanting to say anything? Huh? Not allowed to?
He said I couldn't. The only thing that I would like to add is I will state that Jimmy is a true leader for our organization, and he sets the standard for all of our employees and the management. He's, he's a true leader for our department, for our whole organization and for the community.
Couldn't agree more. You find a way to bring out the best in people. I mean, I didn't think anyone could change me. I was, I was, sorry, but I was fairly bad at cussing, and I have gotten so much better. Like, really have gotten a lot better. And that's, that's really because of Jimmy. No, your, your leadership has been amazing. It's, it, just, it's hard to sit here and list everything that you've done, the changes you've made, the impact that you've made on so many lives, inside this building and outside this building. Most people don't realize everything that you're actually involved in, while still being an amazing dad, grandfather, and husband. So, so we are, we are very lucky. Can't thank you enough. Now we get to take our picture again. Well, not to be outdone by Mr. Lyles, Paul Jones, 30 years with the electric department.
It's on, can you hear me? Mayor Council PJ came to the electric department in 94 and was hired as a meter reader. In 2000, he transferred to the street department, 2003 to the water, and then in 2008, came to the electric department. So he's kind of been all over public works and in utilities as well. I can speak for when I've been there. He's operated trucks for us, backhoes, stood streetlights, installed conduit. There's not much underground that he hasn't done, as far as electric goes. More recently, he's done some projects for us, including some GIS mapping, verifying that our map is correct, checking some CT sizes in our transformers. And currently, he's doing a inventory on our streetlights to find out how many we have left to change out to LED. Another thing we've added to him more recently is he's, he's taken care of brush hogging in our easements. So that's been really appreciated. So, anyway, thank you PJ for all, all he does.
We'll get that to him next time. Okay, well, that is the service awards. Now moving on. Those of you that don't know, the day, the first Saturday after Thanksgiving is Small Business Saturday. So make sure you spend your dollars locally. So whereas Saturday, November 30th, 2024, is Small Business Saturday, a day to celebrate and support small businesses and all they do for our community. And whereas Small Business Saturday spending reached an estimated $17 billion in 2023, and whereas customers and consumers who choose to shop at local small businesses directly and significantly contribute to the strength and vitality of Nixa's local economy and help support the continued economic growth and prosperity of our community. And whereas Nixa's community of small business owners are pivotal to the economic future as the drivers of innovation and job creation and represent the very essence of the American dream, as well as the time-honored ideals of hard work and individual responsibility. And whereas the City of Nixa supports our local businesses that create jobs and boost our local economy and are grateful to the small locally-owned businesses for their generous contribution to the quality of life we enjoy. And whereas the City of Nixa encourages all residents to support our nation's nearly 34 million independent businesses this Small Business Saturday and all holiday season long. Now therefore, I, Jared Giddens, Mayor for the City of Nixa, do hereby proclaim the 30th day of November, 2024, as Small Business Saturday. And we have our CEO of the Nixa Chamber of Commerce, Whitney Gisson, here to accept this proclamation. All right. This room is truly filled with a lot of people that do a lot of good things for our community. So thank you all very much. Okay. First up, the visitor's section. I don't believe we have anyone signed up to speak. If you would like to speak during the visitor's section, feel free to come on up and do so at this time. Thank you, Mr. Godby. No one is going to. I will close the visitor's section. Thank you all very much for coming. There we are. All right. And moving on. All right, first up is First Reading Council Bill 2024-37.
First reading Council Bill number 2024-37, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Nixa renewing the base lease agreement for real estate in existing facilities with the Bank of New York Mellon Trust Company, N.A., for refunding Certificates of Participation Series 2013. Presenting is Finance Director Jennifer Evans.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is an annual ordinance. That is a requirement of our agreement for this debt service. This is a, an official document to let our bondholders know that the debt service payment has been appropriated by council. So it is in the budget for next year. The balance as of the end of this year will be $55,000, and so we have one payment left to make next June, and then this debt will be paid off. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Thank you, ma'am. No other questions, I will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak on this, do so at this time. All right, now we'll close the public hearing. Nothing else. Moving on to First Reading Council Bill 2024-38.
Okay, again, this is the ordinance for the 2025 operating in capital budget. Not much has changed since the, the last budget document that you received at the last meeting. So there were a few minor tweaks, but overall, the major things have stayed the same. So we've gone over it several times by this point. If anybody has any questions or last-minute things that they would like to add, now would be the time. Actually, last week would have been the time.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think we're, I think we're past that.
But I would be happy to answer any questions I, I could, if you, if you have any.
Do you have any questions? Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, no questions, I will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak on this, do so at this time. All right, now we'll close the public hearing. Moving on, Second Reading Council Bill 2024-33.
Second reading Council Bill number 2024-33, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Nixa rezoning the real property generally located at 1101 North Kenneth Street from light manufacturing M1 District to Highway Commercial HC District. Presenting is Planning and Development Director Scott Gaby.
Mayor Council, good evening. So this is for the rezoning of approximately 1.7 acres at the northwest corner of Kenneth and Catherine Streets. Catherine is an outer road adjacent on the west side of 160 in this area. It's mainly the Walmart intersection is kind of how it's most commonly known as. The surrounding land uses to the west and north are primarily M1, which is light manufacturing. To the south, there is a highway commercial zone piece of property. To the east is Highway 160, and on the east side is also Highway Commercial. So three of the four corners of the Highway 160 and Catherine intersection are already zoned Highway Commercial. This is the outlier, which is still zoned M1. The structure that is currently on this property was built in 1974. This property was annexed in 1985. It is served by Nixa Water and Sewer, but not Nixa Electric. Any redevelopment of this property will require conformance with current standards, currently adopted redevelopment standards. The future land use map does show that this property should be business flex, which, as the name suggests, is very flexible. It could be anything from restaurants to an office park to even light manufacturing. So the current use that this property has would be allowed in the proposed zoning of Highway Commercial. It would not, we would not be creating a non-conforming use. This was presented in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission on November 6th. Nobody approached the commission in opposition, so the commission did recommend approval, unanimously recommend approval. Staff does recommend approval, as this is a continuation of existing zoning that is in the area, and it'll be real nice.
Real nice, Clark. See what you did there.
You got any questions? I'm available.
Any questions? Thank you, Clark.
You're welcome, sir.
All right. No other questions, I will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak on this matter, do so at this time. All right, I will close the public hearing. Anything else from council? I will accept a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
First by Mr. Vess, a second by Mr. Peterson. Roll call, please.
Kelly Morris?
Yes.
Darlene Graham?
Yes.
Zern Vess?
Yes.
Aaron Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next up, Second Reading Council Bill 2024-34.
Second reading Council Bill number 2024-34, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Nixa annexing approximately 12 acres of real property generally located at 1137 South Truman Boulevard, zoning said property to single-family residential R1 zoning district, and amending Chapter 2, Article 2, Division 1, Section 2-8 of the Nixa City Code. Presenting is City Planner Brendan Justin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As we discussed a couple of weeks ago, this is the proposed annexation on South Truman. The City of Nixa purchased the property in 2013. It's now the location of the Nixa Dog Park, water tower number eight, and a storage facility for public works. To the north is undeveloped land, which is zoned R1. To the east is Forest South Subdivision, which is also zoned R1. West of the subject property is a 20-acre farm, which is outside of the city limit. And to the south is a KMO substation, which is also outside of the city limit. The future land use map indicates a single-family residential is the preferred use for this land. So we are requesting R1 as the underlying zoning, although the current use will, will stay for the foreseeable future and it's quasi-public municipal use. So the property is in Tier 1 of the future growth area in the comprehensive plan. We, since we had a light agenda this month, we figured it was as good a time as any to go ahead and formally annex the property. The property is compact and contiguous with the current city boundary. Planning and Zoning Commission did vote 6-0 to recommend approval of the annexation, and staff recommends approval as well. And staff's here if you have any questions for us, so.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
No other questions, I will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak on this. I will close the public hearing. Anything else from council? I will accept a motion.
Make a motion.
Second.
First by Ms. Graham, a second by Mrs. Morris. Roll call, please.
Darlene Graham?
Yes.
Zern Vess?
Yes.
Aaron Peterson?
Yes.
Kelly Morris?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Next up, Second Reading Council Bill 2024-35.
Second reading Council Bill number 2024-35, an ordinance of the-
All right. Next up, second reading Council Bill twenty twenty-four dash thirty-five.
Second reading Council Bill number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-five, an ordinance of the Council of the City of NIXA amending Sections two dash one fifty-one of the NIXA City Code for the purpose of modifying user fees administered by the Parks and Recreation Department, presenting is Parks Director Matt Craft.
Good evening, Mayor, council. As discussed during the budget process and at our last council meeting, this is the ordinance change for all fees related to the Parks Department in the sense of programs and services and memberships. We are looking to raise those rates due to the minimum wage increase that passed during the November bond, or election cycle, and this is a one-time raise that we anticipate covering the next two years of those minimum wage increases taking effect. In that, we will be raising programs and services across the board four dollars, and then memberships will go up three dollars per month for those that pay a monthly fee for us, or thirty-six dollars if they're paying in full. The full list of everything fee-wise is also listed in this ordinance, but I just wanted to give those are the, the primary updates for this fee ordinance change. I'm here if you have any questions.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. No other questions, I will open up the public hearing, and I will close the public hearing. Nothing else from council or staff? I will accept the motion.
So made.
Second.
First by Mr. Peterson, a second by Ms. Graham. Roll call, please.
Zern Vess.
Yes.
Kelly Morris.
Yes.
Darlene Graham.
Yes.
Aaron Peterson.
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, second reading Council Bill twenty twenty-four dash thirty-six.
Second reading Council Bill number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-six, an ordinance of the Council of the City of NIXA amending Sections two dash one fifty-one, twenty-two dash one oh three, and twenty-two dash one twelve of the NIXA City Code, establishing, establishing Division two of Chapter twenty-two, Article two of the NIXA City Code, and establishing Section twenty-two dash two forty-six of the NIXA City Code for the purpose of providing regulations related to private sewage disposal systems, presenting is Assistant Public Works Director Travis Cossey.
Thank you, Becca. Originally presented to you by Mr. Colvin at the November twelfth meeting, the intent of this ordinance is to provide a development option for areas of town that are currently unable to, to develop due to a lack of sewer capacity. While we are actively pursuing the, the construction of a new west regional lift station to accommodate capacity in this area of town, we have areas that are currently unavailable for development due to that lack of capacity and our inability to accept that sewer in our existing system as it is today. To provide a development option, we came up with this ordinance to provide temporary, temporary sewer through the use of a holding tank to afford those people that are currently in the city limits and wish to develop their properties the option to move forward while we are actively moving forward with our new west regional lift station project. This will be a temporary measure, and it, in other words, individuals who take the opportunity to utilize this ordinance will be afforded the ability to provide temporary holding tanks. Once our capacity facilities are installed and operational, they will then disconnect from their temporary holding tank and connect to our sewer system as any other development would within the city. Also included in this ordinance, as, as a means of providing clarity to those that are utilizing it, what will be expected of them at the time that they do connect to the sewer, is our reimbursement formula for our west regional lift station. Basically, we're taking the design area of the lift station, which is one thousand and one acres, which will be divided by the cost of the installation and all, all costs associated with that installation, dividing that out and multiplying it by the numbers of acres that wish to develop in order to develop a fee for that. The three hundred and eighty acres that is currently within the city limits and served and will be served by that area will, of course, be that part of the reimbursement formula that will be afforded by the City of NIXA and will not be reimbursed at the, once, once it is developed, that will already be paid by the city, so there will not be a reimbursement opportunity for that three hundred and eighty acres that is currently served by our existing, by our existing lift station that will be transferred to the new lift station. So that staff has recommended approval of this ordinance to provide for temporary measures allowing areas of town that currently can't develop to develop.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Anything else from council? No, I will accept a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
First by Mrs. Morris, a second by Mr. Vess. Roll call, please.
Aaron Peterson.
Yes.
Zern Vess.
Yes.
Kelly Morris.
Yes.
Darlene Graham.
Yes.
Threw that fairly quick. I have a couple things. Don't forget, this Saturday, the NIXA High School football team is playing in the Final Four, kind of a big deal. I don't think they've, I don't think they've ever done it in this class, for sure. So, I think it's, game's at one, but they're doing a, they announced today they're doing a tailgate-like contest as well, so, like, they're gonna give an award for the best decorated and, and such, so should be a great time. And then, December the sixth is the Mayor's Tree Lighting from six to eight. And then the eighth is the seventieth annual Christmas Parade that starts at two o'clock. And then another thing that I'm actually involved in is December the fourth, I believe it's a Wednesday, is a dodgeball tournament. I am not playing dodgeball, I am going to be a referee. I tried my hand at basketball recently, and my knee still hurts. But, so Santa's Toy Drive, I don't know if anyone has heard of them, but they kind of spun up because Christian County leased of these could no longer handle doing food and gifts for kids for Christmas, so they had to drop the gift side of things and just do food. And a couple in Christian County, and by a couple, I mean, it started out just husband and wife, and they picked up the whole thing and started with it. They've even spent their own money whenever there was too many kids and not enough toys, so they've done some amazing things. So if you have that day free, reach out to me, or there's an event on Facebook, definitely sign up, get a team in it, it'll be a blast. I think it'll be a lot of fun, but, and it's for, for a great cause. And also, if you know of anyone who has a business that would be willing to, you know, put one of their receptacle deals at the business to accept toys, they need all the help they can get. So that will definitely be a good time. Anyone else got anything?
Do you want to remind everybody that the city offices will be closed this Thursday and Friday for everybody to be with their families through the holidays? And we're also gonna push that the city utility drive-through is getting worked on Monday and Tuesday, so the utility department's still open, but that's still, while they're working on that kind of element. And then the utility department, we'd like to remind everybody to do their proper precautions for the upcoming weather change, so I know that there's some announcements are, are gonna be made on social media, and I think there could be some stuff on our website too, but if not, that's, that's pretty easily available to kind of make sure that your houses are ready for some of these cold temperatures that are coming up.
Yes, if you haven't turned your heat on, try it. Never want to wait till the coldest day to try it and it doesn't work. And then to add to that, month of December, unless something crazy was to happen, we will only have one council meeting, and it'll be on the seventeenth. So, normal time.
It's not gonna be on the tenth?
No, ma'am. Glad I said something.
Yeah, 'cause I have a hundred and ninety seconds to that date, okay.
It's all from, anything from staff?
Mayor, I think you checked all my boxes, but I am gonna put Becca on the spot for just a moment. We have an employee lunch coming up that we'd like to invite, invite council to.
December twentieth at Public Works eleven eleven. That's it, December twentieth, Public Works eleven eleven.
Catherine Street.
I couldn't remember the date, so I'm glad Becca said it.
What time?
At noon.
Twelve to one.
Amanda and I are gonna cook again with the help of some of the boys. They're gonna grill our chickens.
All right.
I'm looking at Scott Gaby.
So Mayor, we'd love you and, and council as well to join us.
I already put it on the calendar, I will definitely be there. Wouldn't miss it, it's always fun, especially the video. All right, well, if there's nothing else, Mr. Peterson.
I move that City Council go into closed session under Section six-ten-zero-twenty-one-three and thirteen of RSMO. I also move that the, this closed session, records related there too, and any votes taken by council during this session shall be closed under Section six-ten-zero-twenty-one of RSMO, and that City Council shall stand adjourned after the closed session.
Second.
There we go. Got a first by Mr. Peterson, a second by Mrs. Morris. Roll call, please.
Aaron Peterson.
Yes.
Darlene Graham.
Yes.
Zern Vess.
Yes.
Kelly Morris.
Yes.
Thank you all.